Would you all please stand and join me in the pledge?
I would like to be considered by the United States of America. And we, the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A call for a call for shell.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Present.
Councilmember Dan Hahn.
Present.
Councilmember Cox. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Cox is absent. Councilmember Stubble. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Stubble is not present, although I had communication that she might be appearing via Zoom, so maybe that will happen later in the meeting. Councilmember Josh Hahn.
Yes.
Mayor Monte Richardson.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Need a motion to prove the agenda is presented.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
And motion by Councilwoman White to prove the agenda is presented, second by Councilman Jay Hahn. Give us a second on that. Any changes or corrections? Censoring is none. I'll call for the question, Councilperson Larson.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay. First on our agenda is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing up at six oh two P M. Hearing's open. Rachel, you want to read it?
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash four, an ordinance vacating a partial alley located in the J I Patent Edition, City of Lander, Fremont County, Wyoming, adjacent to four seventy-three South Fourth Street. Whereas there has been a request to vacate a property which is legally described as follows. Partial alley located in J I Patent Edition to the City of Lander, Fremont County, is recorded in the office of Ogden City, Weber County, Utah Territory, and recorded on April twenty-seventh, eighteen eighty-six, and more particularly described as follows. The city attorney said I didn't have to read the legal description. Whereas the city deems that the vacation of the alley would be in the best interest of the city and now therefore be it ordained by the governing body of the City of Lander, Wyoming, as follows. Section one, the mayor and city clerk are directed upon request of Greg and Karen Meyer, the current owners of record of four seventy-three South Fourth Street, to vacate the partial alley of said legal description set forth above and shall execute and deliver a quitclaim deed from the City of Lander to said property owners for the land herein vacated upon the condition that a full release of liability indemnity agreement be executed and said owners pay all costs associated with the vacation and conveyance and upon providing the city with evidence of satisfactory arrangements with the affected utilities. Section two, all ordinances or part of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Section three, severability and any section subsection sentence phase or clause of this ordinance or the application thereof to any person or circumstances is held invalid. Such invalidity shall not affect the other provisions or applications of this ordinance, which can be given effect without the invalid provision or application. And to this end, the provision of these ordinance are declared to be severable. This ordinance shall take effect from and after its passage approval and publication as required by law in the ordinances of the City of Lander.
Okay, thank you. And a call for comment from the council. Any comment? Councilman Hahn.
I I have a question. What is the city's advantage for vacating partial alleys? I know we have, we have them all over the town, but what is the advantage or?
Sure, Mayor and Council, I can answer that. So this is property we wouldn't have to take care of. This is kind of a lost piece. And so it becomes developable acreage owned by somebody who pays taxes on it at that point in time, and then they could develop the lot however they see fit. So there's redevelopment that I believe is planned for this lot, maybe at some point in time as well. So it, you know, if I ever believed that Brody would reconnect and two houses would be torn down, I think it's just one of those lost pieces where something got replatted and you have this extra piece that doesn't really fall into our public right of way anymore. And then we have to operate and maintain that. You know, somebody's got it as grass now and we probably wouldn't want to mow it or do any of those things in somebody's lawn.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, counsel? Any comment from the audience? I see none, so we'll move on. I'm going to close the public hearing at six oh five P M. Hearing's closed. Moving on, communication from the floor. Just couldn't reiterate, please approach the microphones and state your full name for the record. And you'll have three minutes on comments. So is there any public comment? You got twice, you could have wound me twice. Censor, there is none. Let's move on to mayor and council updates. So. Start with Councilperson Larson, any updates?
You know, Mayor, I'm just like to give the the street department and the crews there a pat on the back. It's nice to see three out of the four of those, those streets all paved up and looking really nice. And we might be able to get one more paved before it hits us too hard, huh? Yeah, yeah, maybe. But that's all I've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman White.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo that when, great kudos to both our crew and the others contractors for what they're doing. That's awesome to see. Last week, I was part of the Lander team for the Wyoming Business Council Community Review, which was a great two-day or nearly two-day workshop assessing Landers assets, also helping identify what some of our challenges are. And we've got some steps about how to move forward on some of those things, which was great. Planning Commission met again after our meeting. One of the things was they addressed this vacation. There was also recently a request for rezoning that was denied by the Board of Adjustment. That property owner may or may not come before the council, so we'll have to see for that. For that, otherwise, that's it on my end. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Hahn.
Mayor, thank you. I just have a, I have a comment. I was, I was driving home tonight. I came down Sett, Fifth Street, South Fifth, because they're working on Buena Vista. And there were bicycle riders right in the middle of the road and they were probably my age. And they, they had traffic backed up and they went all the way across Maine, did the same thing on, on the north side. And I, I think my comment here is, is we all have to get together. You know, we have to live together on these roads and to, to respect each other. Because it was, I mean, they were doing it on purpose and, and that's not too cool. So anyway, that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Seen that happen before too also, so, yep.
I've got nothing, Mayor.
I'm just, me real quick. I'll be out of town the rest of the week with Rachel, so we're going to go get all the new H R training we can. So things change so much in H R that we're going to go down and spend a few days doing that. And then the second, sharing, I'll be headed down to Cheyenne's Lib, so. See if we can get some more funding there, so. Yeah, our big project, that's S R F money. That forty-eight is in, that what we're going for too?
It's actually that they want to increase the interest rates on the capital, improve that part of it. And so we're requesting that they don't, that they lower them like they did all the S R F programs. If that's what we want to take to the, there with the assisted living.
Good. Thanks, Shari. All right. Moving on, staff reports. Chief?
I don't really have anything today except for the, the multi-jurisdictional, the D U I team's going to start this weekend. So finally, after all the M U's are signed, we're going to be out there. So coming to a community near you, which there's enough for twenty-four events, so this isn't going to be a one-time thing. This is going to be at least two to three times a month. So we'll be out there in force and just to remind you, it's a five-car unit that's coming from every community is supplying an officer. So we got Shoshone, Riverton, Lander, Sheriff's Office, Highway Patrol. So we'll have a full corps of trained officers out there keeping our roads safe. And ultimately, in the end, that's the goal is to get these fatalities, get us off the top of that list and, you know, keep everybody safe when you're out there doing your thing, so. So you'll be in Lander probably here, you'll see it, we're going to rotate it because we're using data to actually deploy. We're not just randomly saying we're going to go over here or over here. We're actually looking at where the high, where the high fatality crashes have been, where the high DUI crashes have been, where the high density aspects of DUI arrests have been. So we're going to work on those areas first and then we're going to, then move it around. So I'm sure it'll be in Lander here in the next month or so. Well, but we'll go from there. Any questions if you have them?
Lance?
Nothing tonight, Mayor and Council, unless you guys have any questions for me.
Questions for Lance? Okay. Hunter?
I was going to let you guys know that we're aware of some of the main street decorative lighting being kind of dimming. The day is getting longer or shorter, nice getting longer. We chased some grant funding to hopefully replace a lot of those lights, but we're going to do some short-term fixes to at least get those lit up in the short term here. So we're aware of those being down. And to let you guys know that we're going to dust off the Board of Examiners, Board of Appeals. And so to be prepared that there may be some appointments coming up for another board coming up.
Councilman Hahn?
Yes, I had a comment on that and I, I think it, it might be white-out, but has anybody noticed that up there at Buena Vista, you know, the intersection? It is, there is no lights at all up there and it's, it's super dark.
Yeah, it's my understanding the lights that are part of the traffic signals are white-out and the lights in between those are cities. So I would agree, doing an audit the last couple of mornings, there are several lights out on everybody's parts, I think. That we're, will get addressed. I think we would talk with Rocky Mountain Power along with Poles throughout town too, making sure they're aware which ones are out as well.
Thank you. Shari?
Um, I would like to suggest or ask if we could amend our Resolution twelve ninety-two. It's the fees for the water and sewer rates. In that, for the delinquency charges, we charge ten percent of unpaid balance. Well, it doesn't give us any other leeway of making any adjustments to that. And we have a household that had a water break, major water damage and used four hundred thousand gallons for a couple of months. Then she's down to a hundred thousand gallons for the last three months. She's on, and so the company that we have the water insurance with, they also have a philanthropic group. They paid for all her pipes on the outside to get fixed. She fixed the ones on the inside, but needless to say, her water bill is four thousand dollars. Well, her late fee is between three hundred and four hundred dollars a month. Right now, she's only able to make a hundred and fifty, a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty dollars a month payment on it. She's not even able to pay the late fees. So we would like to be able to put something in that delinquency resolution that reads that we have some kind of a guideline if their water bill's over, if they had a water break or their water bill's over two thousand dollars or some kind of language we'd like to come to the council with to make that amendment to be able to help this person out. We, we can give her the two hundred and fifty, she got the leak fixed now. We can give her the two hundred and fifty dollar, which we, which we has already approved to give her the two hundred and fifty dollars to, you know, that she got the leak fixed. But when you're paying a four thousand dollar water bill, two hundred and fifty dollars doesn't go very far. So maybe at the next regular meeting, we'll have some new verbiage and we'll amend that resolution to add us to have some kind of a leeway that we could at least turn her late fees off as long as she stays regular on her monthly payments. If we could turn our late fees off, that would help her. Thank you.
John?
Mayor, I'm just curious, my goodness, four hundred thousand gallon, that, that's not a leak. You know, that, that's a major break.
She has, she has a mess. She has mold in the house and, I mean, she had waters break, lines break in the walls and she has, she has a mess. Thank goodness that this home source, hope, thank goodness they came in and they paid for all the plumbing because she couldn't afford to pay even to get the plumbing fixed, that all the lines that were broken on the outside. So she was only turning her water on when she needed to use it because she had all these leaks. So now we'll see, we did readings today, we'll see if the leak is supposed to be completely fixed throughout the house.
That'd be, I just can't imagine that kind of leak, that that'd be unbelievable.
Yeah, and her only income is social security.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman White?
I mean, Shari, do we have any kind of, and any items in place to watch? I mean, a spike like that is pretty extraordinary. I mean, Councilwoman Larson's, like, that's filling a swimming pool kind of thing. Is there any kind of, does SCADA offer anything or our, our billing system to be able to recognize? Whoa, this is problematic and to be able to address that any faster? Is there any way to have anything like that?
No, not right now, but now if we get the S R F money and we get the new meter system and we can put that in, then there's an, actually an app on people's phones that they can actually set it up to tell them how much water and send warnings when it's over X amount of gallons. And, and we'll be able to see it, we'll be able to see live, you know, and be, we'll be able to set the same parameters here to tell us if we have households that spied to a large area. And I don't think they were able to identify that at the water treatment plant that, I mean, it was four hundred thousand gallons, but it was May and it was actually April.
Atlanta.
Yeah, I was just going to kind of echo what Shari's saying on the water meter. So the newer water meter technologies operate in radio frequencies or daily reads rather than monthly reads. Right now, we drive around once a month and we'll, we'll read remotely through a vehicle. And so we don't get all the information of what's happened in that month until we put it all together and then our system flags it. In the newer technologies, when those are dialing in either over cell phone or over a radio and you're seeing that more often and we can talk to it, you'll get that on a daily basis and they'll flag themselves. So if there's a significant leak, they'll get notified as well as our people will be notified as well so that we can keep an eye on something that's big or out of the ordinary. And it sees that because it knows that the amount of water being used was consistent throughout a duration of time and never went off or changed. And then it can fire back and say, hey, we think there's something going on and you need to take a look at it. So in the future, when we do the S R F projects or meter project, hopefully we get the funding for it. But we're about twenty years anyway, and that's when you look at meters starting to wear out and becoming less accurate. So we're within a year, year and a half of that project anyway.
Okay, great. Thanks for that.
The other thing about these new meters is it can tell what's irrigation and what's household. It's crazy, but the demonstration that a guy came and gave us, it, he showed us graphs and it will show you what you're using for irrigation and it's that smart.
Wow, that's impressive. I look forward to that change happening. Thank you.
Councilperson Larson?
Yeah, just, I'm just trying to get my, my mind around this thing, but our, the city uses, I guess that's a million gallon a day, isn't it? That we, we utilize. Okay, I was, I was thinking that the poor lady was, was using half of the city's water. Okay, thank you.
You know, but Hunter did point out that some of that was happening during last winter. So it may have been beneficial to us to have some of that flow pulling out of that Lincoln Street area because we had all kinds of issues down there last winter anyway.
Okay, is that it, Shari? Ken?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
For sure.
I also will be presenting council with a couple of drafts of ordinances to update some of our current codes. One of them will concern bonding requirements for city personnel. One will ask the council to define entertainment for bar and grill licenses. The state legislature has left that up to the governing body to define. And that's now a part of how they can calculate their percentages for alcohol sales. Other than that, we are currently advertising for both the mechanic and the police captain positions. And that's all I have unless somebody has questions.
Okay, so, thank you. Move on to new business action items. Approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash four on the first reading, vacating, vacating a part, a partial alley location in J I Patterson Addition adjacent to four seventy-three South Fourth. I think we heard.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman White, second by Councilman Larson to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash four. Questions, concerns? I'll call for the question, Councilman Hahn.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Arrival of Jag Hill subdivision. Who's reading that one, Lance?
Sure, Mayor and Council, this is, you know, up by the old Fremont Motors. And so this is some work that had been on the table for a while that we're getting back together and we recommend approval of this subdivision plat. Happy to answer any questions.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
I guess second?
Second?
Motion by Councilman Larson, second by Councilwoman White to approve Jag Hill subdivision. More questions, concerns? Councilperson Larson?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay. Moving on to the tough one, Lita's recommendation for lift funds. First of all, before we discuss it, we need to take it off the table.
You'll need to make, somebody will need to make a motion and take it off the table and it'll need to be voted on. And if you remember, it was, this item was previously amended to discuss each.
Right.
Each proposal individually.
Right.
I'll move to untable.
I guess a second?
Second.
And motion by Councilwoman White, untable, second by Councilman Jay Hahn. Over the question, Councilman Hahn?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. And I hope everybody had time to go over and read them. Would you like Eric to come up? Do you have questions or are you guys ready to go? Does anyone need any more information?
Might be helpful to have our leader representative come up if there are questions.
Yes, we have some questions for you.
Thank you.
Just let you take charge on that one and go ahead and start with yours.
Great, thank you. I think it'd be helpful, could you give us some broad brushstrokes about what, what filters or criteria Lita was using to further review the lift recommendations and to come to the Lita's recommendations that funding not be allocated?
Yeah, so, excuse me. You know, we've, we've sat up here the last couple of quarters, taken a lot of feedback from our applications that we've been getting. Some of those that we've awarded that have produced negative feedback scored higher than all of these. So while the Lift Committee was going through these applications, ultimately, they did their job. They scored them based on the criteria that was placed in front of them. But neither the Lift Committee at the end or Lita when discussing how Lift scored it and discussing each application individually were excited about any of these. It was kind of reflected in Lift scores and then we did have some that scored in the seventy-five percent bracket, but they were towards the lower end of that bracket. And no application really set itself apart from another. I think from top to bottom, we had a ten-point swing. So ultimately, that's what it came down to. We didn't see any project that really provided a lot of motivation for economic development within the community. Ultimately, that kind of guided our decision.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate that explanation. I think one of the things I'm hearing is, from this, or my interpretation, is as Lift has, excuse me, has, Lita has gained more and more experience with reviewing at this point, I'm not sure how many applications, a lot, suffice to say, that potentially the, the scoring matrix that's here about zero to fifteen is zero percent, sixteen to thirty, twenty-five percent and so on. But what I'm hearing is that Lita now has a level of expertise to be more confident that there should be a baseline score before any applications would be eligible for possible funding. So that, that would be my, one of my recommendations for this to, to readjust some of that. I think in part, I think that helps the public understand the due diligence that both Lift and Lita are doing and the responsibility about managing taxpayer funds for that, that it really needs to be a robust application in order to qualify.
Yeah, and that's kind of where we're getting to. I know, you know, we've been tweaking this thing, especially over the last six months or so. We've had several meetings. I know all of y'all, I've sat up here plenty of times in the past.
I've spent your ear often, thank you.
And, and we are, we are kind of tweaking it. What we're, what we're realizing is that, you know, we've made some tweaks for this round. And we have, we changed some things, so now if you don't score fifty percent, you're not in. Or you don't have even a shot. That may need to be tweaked moving forward even further.
Fifty percent or fifty points?
Well, so fifty percent in the fifty percent bracket.
Got it.
So that would be the thirty-one to forty-five.
Okay, okay, got it.
So, but yeah, so we, we tweaked that this past round and you were part of our conversation at our meeting this past month. And, you know, we're looking at even, you know, if you, if you spread those brackets out even farther, we would have some people that didn't even score, you know, probably in the sixty-five to seventy percent range. So, you know, from Lita's standpoint, it comes back to what are we really wanting to spend our limited economic development resources on to get the best bang for our buck with an economic development for the community? So it's not to say that we're going to come next quarter. What we're hoping this does is give us better applications, give more thought into our applications and our applicants, into really creating some, some driving of economic development in the community.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you for that.
I just wanted to say thank you for that. We, we've had some rough meetings and this is, is very difficult. But we also have this absent that we really, we want to keep, we want to make sure we're doing the right decisions. So thank you very much for that.
Okay, first on our agenda. You want to do one-on-one, right?
I had a couple other. So one of the things I noticed as well in this, if you don't mind, Mr. Anderson, maybe you can help shed some light on. It seems like some of the applications were less business oriented than they were bringing existing buildings into better, better condition. And I agree with that, that's, to my mind, that's not meeting the definition of economic development. Is there a way to better articulate that in the eligibility for the project so that, you know, it saves the Lift Committee members who are all volunteers sometime and, you know, doesn't give a sense of false hope as well to some of those folks that those projects should be addressed first. And when it comes time to actual equipment or machines needed for the true business to then, then come with your application. But, you know, catching up on long-term maintenance really isn't what this is designed for.
Yeah, and that's part of the, the issue that, that Lita's facing, that y'all are facing, that Lift's facing, is we don't have as a community a defined idea of what economic development is within the community, right? We don't have our economic development objectives and goals set for the community. We're in the process of working through that, you know, I've mentioned multiple times, Lita's working, trying to work through this Business Council Community Review process. Y'all are setting your strategic priorities and I think Lita's listed, or the economic development is listed in your tier two. So we have some, some footwork to do to get to those economic objectives to where we really have a set path on, okay, this is what we're looking for, whether it be tourism or infrastructure development or business recruiting. I mean, all of these things will, will have some sort of priority tier within our economic development plan. And now we don't have that, so I wouldn't say we're flying by the seat of our pants, but we're looking at these projects individually to say, okay, what meets the best? What meets the best needs that we can identify within the community, so um, some of these that are uh improvements. You know, we had a couple of different ones here with the Grand Marquis renovation, uh, the capital improvements at two twenty-eight Main, we had a couple of projects that were facility. Improvements and maybe some beautification, but they just didn't reach a level um that we thought it would really develop. Uh, our economy locally, so um, we're doing the best that we can. But until we get all these objectives, economic development objectives put in place, um, it's going to be a little bit harder to judge each of these individual applicants like that. Um, and the problem is right now, you know, Dan just mentioned, we have a tax we're trying to repass. Um, so we're trying to do the best thing we think we can for the community so that we can repass that tax. Because we're looking at an eighteen to twenty-four month process to define those objectives.
Right, you're correct, thank you for that with um, our our problem statement from the Business Council Community Assessment was exactly that, that we lack it. Um, a shared definition of economic development and a unified vision for our our financial future in that regards. Um, and thank you also brought up the the marquee one was one I. I I personally subscribe to whether maybe we wait until that particular one comes up of, I I know an attractive Main Street is an economic driver. And yet that seems a little bit more of facilities as opposed to a place making. Um, thin lines, I I know a lot of conversation on many, many parts went into this.
Yeah, I would, I would say a lot of our conversation does drive within Lita about uh, tax dollars being derived. You know, we're taking tax dollars and spending it on these projects. We want to see these projects providing tax dollars back into the community. Um, that being said, if we're using that as a judgmental factor, it's hard to justify some beautification projects. Some infrastructure projects, um, those don't always fit in that mode.
Yeah.
Um, but that's, that's an easy sell because you can sell economic development is, okay, we're going to invest this dollar amount. And this is the return we're going to get on it, and if you can define that return, your application is probably going to look a lot nicer.
Right, and and I understand place making is an economic driver, but it it's kind of like your second cousin twice removed. It's harder to see the direct correlation to it. Folks know a pretty attractive street when they get to it, but it's hard to pinpoint. And that's what made me stop and spend money, um, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor, I can. Go through one by one.
We're gonna ready to go one by one on these and if you'll sit there with us, it'd be great. First on our agenda is a salt taco taco and tequila bar. Don't want people to realize this is, it creates new jobs, it's a new business opening up. And uh, they said, uh, she's, she's bringing her old people back to town, they'll come work for her. To run this, so, but uh, why was that a no vote?
So, uh, I I think what we need to do is uh, we need to uh, move to approve in the positive. Uh, and then have discussion and then vote.
We can do that.
That would.
Get a motion.
Uh, so move to approve the fifty thousand dollar funding for salt taco and tequila bar.
A second. One second. Yep.
Yeah. And I guess it dies.
Because it dies. Moving on to uh. Windsor Clinic. Again, motion on that one.
Uh, I I would move to approve for them, let's take having conversation, discussion about it.
I get a motion by Councilman White, second by Councilman Larson, open it up for discussion.
Mayor, if I may?
Okay, go ahead.
Um, thank you for bringing that, so this is one for me, I I appreciate that they're looking at um, equipment for the. Uh, an existing business and what they're doing. Um, and this is one where I see, you know, it's described as potentially increasing a part-time job is not the robust. Economic development that we're shooting for in terms of using taxpayer dollars for that. So I can appreciate the the challenge on that.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, I'll make a comment. I do, I do appreciate this, um. But I believe they've also received money from. Another source. And I haven't been a, a fan of of uh, repeat. Repeat people coming back for for money on this half cent because of the half cent. Um, we got to remember this, this is not just economic development, this is also uh. Uh, an airport, this is rapid transit and there's, it's a lot, a lot bigger than this, so we have to be very responsible with with this half cent money, so. Anyway, that's all I have to say, Mayor.
Hey, then motion in a second. Call for the question, Councilman Larson.
No.
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 Okay. Fails, so moving on to Grand Marquis renovation. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
I get a second.
I'll second.
And a motion by Councilman Larson, second by Councilman White, discussion of Grand Marquis renovation project. Discussion. Councilman Larson.
Yeah, Mayor, I uh, I I guess this just goes right along with the discussion that we had here earlier, you know, we're um. Updating um. The the physical facilities, I I I struggle to to see where that's a uh. An economic development. Something that that kicks that off and and triggers that, you know, so uh. That that's just all I've got there, you know, I just don't see the economic development there.
Is this gonna call for the question, Councilman Hawn?
No.
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 Yeah, fails. Land or performing arts. In a second. Uh, need to have any discussion?
Is land or performing arts the same as community concerts? Is that what that used to be once upon a time or?
I'm I'm not qualified to answer that question, so, but they do put on, they put on the Nutcracker this past year, they put on performances within the community, yes. And have uh, since nineteen forty-seven, I believe.
Motion, let's move on. Capital improvements, two twenty-eight Main Street. Make a motion on that.
I will move again for into um, discussion.
Maybe a second.
Think there again, Mayor, we've discussed that.
Capital improvement.
So, if it dies, we lack a second.
Okay, it dies. Hope for conservation nonprofit, I mean, outdoor council.
So I'll move to approve or discussion.
I get a second.
I'll say.
You got a second from Councilman Larson to have conversation on uh, hope for the conservation nonprofit. As I'm white.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, this is one where um. I value the role that nonprofits play in our community, especially those that are directly tied to primary dollar events. We've awarded funds to some of those groups, Landor Cycling Club, um. Uh, Landor Presents, et cetera, for for this one, um, it's really tough to provide support to a nonprofit that doesn't. Generate tax dollars and what they're offering is essentially a repeat of services that are already available. There, there are spaces available to rent or for for low cost. So, I appreciate what they're, what they're doing, what they're offering the community, to me, that's not the. Not meeting the definition of economic development as we've defined.
Mayor, also, that that's something that was discussed at the the chamber meeting, you know, is there really is a. Uh, a quite a number of facilities that's available for having meetings. That uh, that are there and, you know, available, so.
I call for the question, Councilperson.
No.
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 It fails. Last one on our list is onsite laundry and showers, it's on there. Can I get a motion in a second for discussion or?
I think this again is a repeat of of what we talked about there before. Sounds like you done a good job there.
Okay. Okay, this goes now, it's.
I I do have one question.
Go ahead, Councilman Larson.
Trying to find it, maybe it was up there on the reports, but there was something there that uh. This stuck out at me that, you know, they were hoping to um. Get the, the number of employees in three hundred and four years. You know, that if they got this, if they got the. Anybody else see that, that uh. If if they got the the funding that they they hope to get the the number of new employees within three hundred and four years. I I didn't know what.
That was probably a typo, I think that meant to say three to four years.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
So, one other comment, if I may, Mayor. Thank, thank you, Mayor, um, Mr. James, one other thing that uh, I learned, I think from you and and some others in reviewing this was that I. Now, I I can, I appreciate the countless hours that lift puts in and their willingness to work with the applicants to try to. Uh, make it feasible for them. Uh, I'm concerned though that one of the the leeways that they're giving is not having new businesses necessarily file their business plan with it. And and that to me, I, there's a lot of things I'm I'm game for them providing leeway, and that's one where I'm just uncomfortable with a new business. Being awarded taxpayer dollars without a sound financial plan, so I would ask that be one of the criteria that uh, lift does not. Um, offer flexibility on.
Yeah, and you know, part of our flexibility at the lift level um, is we want to score these applications, we want to have the pitch nights done. We want to find um, the people that are truly going to develop economically uh, here in the community. So we want to give everybody the chance, but yes, we do encourage all the applicants, please follow the instructions, uh, you know. If you're starting a new business, uh, part of the application is provided to your uh, business plan and a. A two-year business plan is a pretty detailed document. Um, so, yeah, we want everybody to to do as best as possible, and we do ask our applicants. Um, when they don't submit it initially, like we're, we are very first meeting. Is the lift committee getting together to determine eligibility of the applications. Um, and we have kicked some back and say, hey, you need to tweak this, or you need to do this, we, we don't want to kick out people based on. Um, little bitty things, but we also want people to provide enough information, so, and I'm hoping that this round. Um, kind of shows that we're serious about this, right? We want to see good economic development projects, and if they're not going to be good. We're not going to recommend that they get funded, um, so we want to see good winners. Um, we've gotten enough feedback from the community, from from council, from all the members of Lita and left about, we want to see good projects for our community. And uh, we need good projects, so we've had some good ones. Um, and we want to continue down that route, but we're not just going to start giving away money because we need to. Um, you know, with, with you not funding any of these applications like we recommended this round. Um, you saw the amount in our chart, we have a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars of rollover. Um, I know in the past, this has been mentioned to me by multiple people, councils look to, oh, maybe we should give that to the airport, we don't recommend that. Uh, happen, and we want to see it roll over and go in back into the left program so that we can fund, you know, if we have better applications next round. We may have an all-star selection next round, and it'll give us the money to fund them all, so. Um, the next round of applications are due in a week, November first. Um, and as usual, we don't have a lot of applications so far, they usually come in the last day or two, uh, but we'll start this process over and. You know, the combined hours of you guys, because we have multiple conversations with you as well, but the combined hours of your time. The leaderboard members' time, all the lift committee uh, time as well in excess of a hundred hours uh, per quarter. Um, so it's not like we're not, we're not uh, spending the the appropriate amount of time making these decisions, so.
Thank you, I I really appreciate the rigor that all the parties are doing on that, and and again, I I I think the applicants. Uh, have to be, for for me, that's a hard no, if they don't advance to the scoring process, if they're not, if a new business isn't uh, supplying a business plan. So, thank you for all of your work on this.
Also, no, so we talked about this a few minutes ago, and I won't take up a whole lot more time, but is council interested in us? Looking at tweaking the matrix again so that we have a different threshold for throwing out. I know, Missy, you mentioned this earlier, you and I have had a discussion about it, but we've obviously discussed it at the leader level, um. So lift not so much because they don't uh, take a lot of part after it meets uh, after they score it. Um, but that's certainly something we can look at if we want to expand those levels um, into twenty percent or ten percent categories and then. Um, throw out, if that's something you'd like us to look at, we could more than uh, more than be happy to do that and come back with a better suggestion.
I may.
Councilman White.
Thank you, I I think, thank you for that question, I I think for me, it um. Really what I'm hearing, I'll read what I said early on, is that in the scoring matrix, it seems like. The experience of reading all these many applications now shows that below a certain point score, it's not showing. The project to be a robust one that merits awarding it, so I I think clarifying that both for the applicants. The general public and us as well of um. It that that seems like that would help clarify the process to do that, not necessarily changing the application questions. Or how lift evaluates and their their internal metrics of each question and awarding the points, but that. A certain number of points have to be achieved in order to be considered for funding.
And I realize this is not a work session, but I'm just wondering if you had an idea of what you were thinking there for the um, the level there that. Needed to be obtained.
You know, it seems like something in, based on on this round of applications, and I would leave it in the the leader's. Uh, more in-depth expertise for, but it seems like somewhere in that fifty-point ranges, um, seems like to be the the low threshold. Um, but again, I I would ask Lita to give some consideration for that, for the many applications you've seen to date. Um, and what y'all would think for that.
Mister Mayor. Um, one other thing then, um, if signs are not going to be, right now, that's an eligible project. And we don't want to waste somebody's time filling out an application, if you all feel that signage is not something that should be funded. Then we should eliminate that from our eligible project list, because right now that is out there as one of the things that qualifies is signage.
Yeah, Councilman White.
Yeah, I I think that's the the challenge of defining what constitutes place making. To me, it's the squishiest element of economic development, what constitutes place making, uh, perhaps it's getting a little better. Um, resources about helping clarify that definition.
Well, I do know that when the Wyoming Business Council came through uh, Main Street, they said that the replacement of the grand sign was low-hanging fruit. For improving the um, look of Main Street for Lander, that that was an easy thing for Lander to fix to improve their Main Street was to. For fixing that sign.
But should that be something that's done by the owner? Not the taxpayer.
I think that because it was one of the eligible projects, that's why the owner put in for it, is we, they looked on the list and saw that signage was. And that's not the first application that we've had for somebody putting in for signage.
All right, move on, uh, just like to put out there, I'll thank the lift committee. I know they spent a lot of hours and time in this, uh, I do appreciate them very much and. Hope they continue to do the hard work for us, so we appreciate the lift committee. hope they continue to do the hard work for us. So we appreciate the lift committee, also in leader group as well. I know you're all volunteers and sometimes it's like you get knocked back once or twice, but thank you guys for all your hard work. I do appreciate it. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting? What do we have? Oh, I'm on the back page. I'm ready to be done. Approved resolution thirteen, thirteen amendment, resolution twelve eighty-five, lander city fee schedule for the purpose of adding a new, non-conform, non-conforming setback utility regulation fee.
Hi, so, um, with our building department being more rotund and with, or robust, I should say, and, saying that, uh, using resolution twelve eighty-nine that has our building department fee schedules, we're finding that, um, that the existing non-conforming use fee was too much for, for the citizens to pay. Uh, so for example, the simple re-roof on a house would cost sixty dollars, but they would have to pay a two hundred and seventy-five dollar non-conforming use fee if their house was too close to building setbacks that were, you know, if their home was too close to their property lines. With something we can't necessarily change is where their house is sitting on their property line. So non-conforming use is a, a tool we can use for them to, for us to record that within the city. So if there is damages beyond fifty percent done to the home, house has to get rebuilt, they would build it to the proper setbacks. Um, so what we're asking for is just to reduce that two hundred and seventy-five dollar fee down to a twenty-five dollar fee. So we can just, uh, record all of these non-conforming uses in town and not put, uh, onus on, citizens of a exorbitant fee along with that.
That makes sense.
So simple uses would be like a re-roof on a house, or if you're redoing your water line to your home, some, some simple things that you want to fix on your home, but your house was built in the wrong spot, basically. This is a simple fix for that.
Mayor, I move to approve, uh, resolution thirteen thirteen.
Okay.
Second.
Call for the question, councilman.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes. Now can we adjourn this one?
Now I move to adjourn. Portion of our meeting.
Let's get a second.
Yes, second.
Call for the question.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes. Right now we have a work session following, uh, discussion on the new business. Is the discussion, uh, in terms of the new proposed, LBFD bylaws, that's our lander rural fire department. Eric, you're up. You want to come up?
There, there we go. All right, thank you. So, um, yeah, about every two to four years, uh, the fire department takes a look at the bylaws, um, revises them as needed. Um, this year, there's been a few minor changes just to update what's in the document to reflect, some decisions that you guys have already voted on in the past as far as some of the pay. Um, we've also cleaned up some of the verbiage, uh, to make it flow a little bit better. And then the biggest thing that you guys are going to see, um, is an addition of article nine, which is the lander volunteer fire department awards. Um, this came to light after there was some discussion on, uh, essentially how much money was being spent on awards and, and what we're buying and things of that nature. So that article was put in here to set a standard for us on the max amount of, money being spent on the awards, um, how the awards are issued and things of that nature. But the rest of the document, like I said, is essentially just cleaning things up a little bit. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions, council?
What were, what were the amount on the words prior to this?
Uh, there was never any set standard. It was kind of all over the place.
Okay.
Um, so the last two years, um, we kind of took an average of what was spent and came up with what's in the document now. So, and the other thing I'll add in the grievance section, um, I gotta find it here, sorry. Um, there was a lot of verbiage after this document was sent to you guys. Um, there was some verbiage in there that stated employee and, and supervisors and stuff like that. So, uh, we did change those to instead of employee, it is now listed as member. Um, as to reference the member of the fire department, supervisor was changed to chief and officers, so.
It was good to not have arbitrary and capricious amounts available for.
Any questions for, uh, council?
No questions. Thanks for being diligent and keeping up with, uh, making it appropriate.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Right, thanks, Eric. It's done, our news list is, uh, Lander Community Veterans Resource Center, Joey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. Um, I'm here to present the, mouthful of the Lander Community Veterans Resource Center Incorporated, or the Lander Veterans Center. Um, it's pretty short and simple on that. Um, again, my name is Joseph Waller. Uh, everybody calls me Joey. I'm a staff sergeant, United States Army, retired medically. Um, I'm duly elected president of the Lander Veterans Center. Now, excuse me, I want to take my glasses off so I can see. Thank you. Um, we're located at one ninety Custer Street here in Lander. Uh, we provide services for not just veterans, but for our first responders, firefighters, police officers, um, EMTs. We're trying to get us more recognizable out into the community. Um, we understand the fact that there are already resources out there. The issue is, is that they are almost unattainable. It's hard for, veterans themselves to find these things just around Lander. Most of us have to travel outside of Fremont County just to receive these kinds of services that we are, successfully getting installed here in Lander for our veterans and for our first responders. Um, we are committed to the mental health aspect of, our people that, uh, that are having these kinds of issues. One of the, one of the things that we have is, uh, for instance, veterans talking to veterans. It's a peer group. Uh, the easiest way for veterans to deal with some of the things that they've seen, that they've been through, that they've dealt with, or haven't dealt with is to talk to other veterans that have actually experienced that. Same with firefighters. Same with police officers, EMTs. Um, it'd make no sense for a firefighter to go to an individual to seek help or to talk to them and they're a dishwasher at a restaurant and they just don't grasp the concept of what, these guys have gone through and what they've seen. Um, so we are setting up these groups. We have a moral injury group. Um, the, right now, the Veterans Administration does not recognize moral injury as being a, they, they see it as an issue, but they do not see it as a diagnosis or as something to help veterans. Um, so we are partnered with, uh, the VOA, the, uh, Volunteers of America, to put on the moral injury group. Um, are, we, we've got several people that are trained in moral injury. We have several people that are, trained in other aspects of these things, so that way we can better help the community at large. Um, like I said, it's, it's kind of a miss, a misnaming of the Lander Community Veterans there. We are for the Lander community, even though we are veteran-focused because we are a veteran group. Uh, we have set up so far with, here in Lander, we are facilitators with the Wyoming Food Bank. We offer applications to fill out for that for them, um, and assistance in filling out those forms. Sometimes that can get to be a huge task for individuals to fill out. Um, we are also partnered with Almost Home Wyoming. If y'all are familiar with that, it's helping getting people into housing and, and, getting them, back stable. Um, November sixth, at our center, we are opening our doors at eleven AM to one PM. We're trying to shoot for a wider gap timeframe for our coffee, um, broke coffee hut, uh, for our coffee house, um, where we offer free coffee during that lunchtime period. Um, that's a lot of times in the morning when guys get to work, there are stressors at work that trigger certain emotions. And getting guys there just to sit there and have coffee and talk about it and, and be able to do these things. We are a, uh, tobacco-free facility. We're also an alcohol-free facility, which opens us up for a lot of different things, especially with the Veterans Administration. Veterans Administration wants to see that you are not having a bar attached to your building. Uh, that's hard to have other individuals come in and help you. Um, we just got approved, I shouldn't say just, in June, we got approved for a law grant for twenty-two thousand dollars for our, that pays for our first year's rent. That pays for a lot of things that we have going on up there. I would challenge you, city councilman, mayor, to stop in. I know Mr. Mayor stopped in there, um, challenging to stop in. See what we're about, see what we're doing. Um, I know that y'all have the paperwork on this. Um, there's just very few things that I would add to that. Um, we've got some other things that are just, my gosh, everything is just rolling so fast for us. Um, we have organizations that are coming to us going, hey, you guys are doing this awesome. Can we partner with you? We have the, uh, suicide prevention for Fremont County. They're, they're wanting to partner with us. Um, Michael, our director, he is, uh, on that board now. Um, but there's just so many things in the works and I would love to sit here and take up four hours to be able to discuss every single issue that we have going on. Um, but we've also identified some other things in the community. We've seen things that have been going on and we are, like I said, we are not going to close our doors to anyone seeking help. Uh, we are not counselors. We're facilitators. If we can't help you in whatever aspect, we know the people that can help you and we can get you out there. Um, other than that, is there any questions that you all would have?
Yeah. Uh, Joey, um, does the Veterans Administration, do they help or support groups out there with any of these types of, uh, situations?
So there are, there are certain aspects of the VA that does help, um, like getting, getting veterans back into housing and things like that. There are those things. Um, but you know, with Wyoming, but being such a rural community, it's four and a half hours to Sheridan, right? Ish, give or take speed limit. Um, to get out there to, to, to the veterans home up there to, get those guys there, it's a trek. And having someone here centrally located in the state, we're able to get them their resources that they need without them having to take these trips to, to do these things. We also have the, uh, the van, I don't know if you guys have ever seen the van or not, the veterans van that, sometimes used to park down at a Pumida or, uh, Palace, thank you, down at Palace Pharmacy. Um, we have it set up now to where he'll be coming to us, weather pending, winter's coming, once a month to set up his van up at our location. And then we can help veterans get in and do their paperwork, do these things. Um, we do have a VSO, a Veteran Service Officer over in Riverton. Um, but she's by appointment only. That's kind of hard for veterans to set up an appointment with her, especially, with different aspects of just life itself happening. Go ahead, sir.
I guess I should, uh, uh, the, the help and the support was, I was wondering if they, financially helped the groups, not, not, uh, not trying to pull away from your organization.
And the financial support isn't so much financial as it is, they're providing us with, like the van itself. Um, that's no money out of our pocket. We're fighting right now to get our five oh one. This, I'm going to be a nerd for a second. Five oh one C three P O, the five oh one C three. Um, we're fighting to get that now. Uh, we have gotten everything provided as far as that goes. We just got up on our website, which was a step that we had to do for a five oh, five oh one C three. Thank you. Um, but there's, there are certain aspects that we've been catching up on and trying to play catch up on. But as of right now, the lower foundation on Wednesday, correcting me from a Wednesday, they're presenting us with, the plaque and things of that nature, um, for their appreciation, showing their appreciation for our center. Uh, we've gotten letters from the governor, uh, letters from, uh, senators, uh, showing their support, showing their appreciation for us and for what we're doing. So there's a lot of stuff that we are really getting along and much faster than anyone ever imagined, much faster than I imagined. Um, we didn't think that, when me and Michael met in January of this year, we didn't think that, by this point, we would actually have a building. This was something that we were like, oh my gosh, this is just happening so fast. And, and everybody's just behind us and supporting us in this and, um, we're just asking, for support, not just, we're not asking for financial support so much. Don't get me wrong, money is good, right? Because it keeps the power going and everything else. Um, but we're asking for support and recognition, just saying that, hey, these guys are here, they're here to help you and.
Uh, organization going there and I, I was just curious, uh, how many, veterans here in Lander, you know, are, are you putting up in the Almost Home and, and, and helping out with the, with the food bank and so forth like that? You know, I, I, I think that I live in a, uh, uh, a bubble there sometimes and I just don't see a, a lot of this stuff that, uh, that goes on.
There's, there's always going to be struggling families, always going to be struggling veterans. Um, and it's not just the veterans that we are there for, it's for their families also, for the caretakers.
Right.
Um, with that being said, are there, are there struggling veterans? Are there struggling veteran families here in Lander? Yes, there are. There's, there's more so than you would believe. Um, veterans, Mr. Larson, are, extremely apt at hiding their injuries and hiding what is going on in their lives. You won't know, even if you ask them, they won't tell you. That's why this organization is here. So that way we can help these veterans that have these issues and we're giving them a safe place to come in and speak of these things.
Right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
N- not so much in, in terms of a question, but, uh, to say, express gratitude for what you're doing. That's, um, just heartbreaking that folks who commit in a life of service and, and the, uh, the hardships that they see through that service, uh, don't always get the, the care that they need. And I'm, I'm glad your organization is working to rectify that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you have something to add, Mike? Come up to the podium.
Uh, councilmember, Hannah, I would like to, uh, real quick address your particular question about funding through the VA system. Uh, we, the Veterans Administration in the state of Wyoming is going through a complete reorganization right now. They have lost about seventy-five percent of their paid employees since January first. As part of that, they were very grateful that we're now in place. We have, our organization has now been designated at the state level as a Veterans Administration Community Access Point, which gives us the right and the authority to, to fulfill all requirements except direct medical care for veterans in this entire state of Wyoming, if necessary. We're their first nonprofit organization in the state of Wyoming to be thus designated. In furtherance of that. They have submitted our paperwork to Washington DC for national recognition as a CAP, Media Access Point. If we can get that designation, we will then become eligible. For VA funding. In the meantime, we are reliant on our community for help. So far since August first, when we opened our doors. Thanks to several organizations and several companies, we've received about thirty-five thousand dollars worth of donations, either financial or in kind. We completed the one-year completion agenda for our lower grant in six weeks. We're moving. We're gonna make a difference in this town. And in this area. As far as the number of veterans, right now in Lander itself, we have eight hundred and seventy-one. Registered military veterans. Living in Lander. We're over ten percent of the population in this town. In Fremont County as a whole, there's one thousand one hundred and seventy-five. Combat veterans. With a total of one thousand seven hundred veterans total countywide. Lander by itself is sixty percent of all the veteran population for all of Fremont County. I also serve as the chaplain for the American Legion post in this town. I'm also the district. American Legion Chaplain. I have officiated at far too many veteran funerals in the last several years. I can tell you for a fact, I have walked through city park in the middle of the night on the backside. I've encountered several dozen veterans, homeless, unregistered, unrecognized. Who are terrified to register because of their fear of. Government above the local level. They now know we're here. They're starting to reach out. Finally, we've got people who are available. We're bringing other resources in from around the state into Lander to address issues that are longstanding for not only veterans, but. Homeless people living on the street who never served a day in the military, but that's okay, they're homeless. They're human beings. We're gonna help. We've got people who have mental health issues, who either cannot afford or have no access to mental health care. We're gonna provide peer-to-peer counseling for them.
Coaching.
Yep. Sorry, we have to be careful with the legal ease.
Yeah.
As, as attorney can point out that we are not counselors, so we are not, not provide. Counsel, and now we can refer them to, get counseling, receive counseling, but we are coaching. Veterans, talking to veterans or peer talking to peer, that, that helps. But that's what our abilities are. And. Like Michael touched on, I said, I, I could be here for hours and discuss this. I was trying to convince him. Mr. Larson's hungry.
Go and check him out.
So the last comment I have, non-go, pick my seat, a hundred percent of the veterans directly involved in our program are disabled veterans, including both of us. We all suffer from PTSD of one degree or another. We, we understand. We've been there. We've walked in those boots. I had a near fatal stroke in twenty nineteen. I have the equivalent of a traumatic brain injury. Because of that. I understand those things. Every one of our veterans can relate. And that's why we're doing this. And I would like to personally reach out to Mayor Monte Richardson for his, his personal support. When we first started talking about putting this together and his encouragement and his encouragement was a huge. Part of what was able to motivate both Joey and I. To. Put in sixty, eighty, ninety hours a week since the beginning of this year to make this a reality. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, guys. The service needed, so thank you very much. Any more questions? What was your address again, Joey, up there for Atlantic? One ninety Custer.
One ninety Custer, yes. Right up by the golf course, if anybody. Alright. Also, if anybody knows of any volunteers that would love to come up and sit and be a secretary, that would be awesome. But like I said, we are, we are a, we are a nonprofit, so as it stands, we, we sit, we try to, we're keeping the doors open. If anyone, we have our phone number up on the doors, we have our address, so if anybody has an emergency, they can contact us. Also, there's legis- legislation in the state to, I don't know if anyone knows this or not, but to disband, what's that number, eight one one? Eight. Nine. Nine eight eight. The emergency, the suicide number here for Wyoming, they're, they have it on the legislation to. They just put it on the docket that they're gonna no longer support that. And that is gonna do. Arm, and that's why we're heroes. Like Mr. Michael said. Far too many veterans commit suicide, we all know the statistics. And it's not just veterans. There's kids here in this town that are hurting, that are suffering, that are. Not doing well mentally either. And we are there for them. So, and we're, we're trying to get the resources to be able to put this together and and refabricate it so that way we can. Help out junior high kids, high school kids and and keep working on this. I mean, we're, we're trying to morph this into something huge where we can actually get the mental health. Here and get it, get it taken care of here in Lander. Besides all the other things that we do. Many hats, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate all your hard work. Okay. Soon as Joey gets out of the way, Carrie, you wanna make your way up here or here? Through Elkan or greenhouse gases emissions goals? You guys want to introduce yourselves? That'd be great. Go ahead, start with that one.
Yeah, I'm more comfortable standing than I can talk with my whole body. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Louisa Hunter Storm. I am a member of the city's. Energy and Environment Task Force. I'm joined by the whole rest of the task force, which includes Karikolovich, Courtney Larson, Adam Kippenheim and Randy Kraft. And we'll reintroduce ourselves. Each of us are gonna speak for a minute. We are here to talk to you tonight about some potential municipal greenhouse gas reduction targets. And we have a lot of detailed information. It won't take forever, but it's pretty detailed. And so we hope that. We'd like to ask you to hold the questions until the end because we do hope that we'll get to your question before it's finished. Quick review of who we are. We are a non-city-appointed committee. We were established in February of twenty twenty-one. We are all volunteers with one part-time paid staff member who is paid with grant funds, not city funds. And there is a city council liaison who sits on our committee. Currently, that is Councilmember Julia Stubble. We operate adjacent to the city council, really to, to help the city of Lander. And our goals are very simple. Number one is to save the city government money. To save the city government energy and to reduce environmental impacts. The ways that we do that, as a quick overview, we do studies. We've done one study so far, which was the. Energy and Environment Report that you'll remember, and there could be others in the future like a. An inventory of the city's waste stream or something like that. We recommend projects and research options, so we've done a lot of research for the city on. Really kind of down in the weeds details of this piece of equipment needs. Replaced. What are the options that might save money and energy? We help with grant writing. And we are also here to help the city with goals and planning, which is why we are here tonight. A quick review of all the things we've done in the last year. We did that City of Lander Municipal Energy and Environment Report. We assisted the city staff on three federal grant applications, did a variety of research on. Energy efficiency, reducing electricity demand charges, facilitated a number of meetings, attended a number of meetings with. Related to the city and also adjacent local governments, Fremont County Association of Governments, Fremont County Solid Waste Board. Things like that. I'm not gonna read all of them, but there's a bunch of things that, that we've been doing. Why we are here tonight is one of the things that came out of our. Energy and Environment Report was the idea for the city government to. Set a goal to reduce its greenhouse gas emissions. And that was something that you all included in your strategic plan that you created earlier this year is. The idea to consider that. And so that's why we're here, is to talk about what such a goal would look like, what we. As a group would recommend for a goal, what the implications of that are, what the finances of that are, and to kind of walk you through it so that you all can consider it. And with that, I will turn things over to Courtney Larson.
Thank you, Louisa. So I'm just gonna go over a little bit more about what exactly is a greenhouse gas target. Go ahead. So it's basically just a commitment that an organization would make to. Lower greenhouse gas emissions by changing the way they do their operations or their policies. And why would you want to do this? That's something that we're gonna talk a lot more about in detail throughout the presentation, but very briefly. There are many benefits, including increasing sustainability, setting a long-term vision that the organization and stakeholders can work together on. The kinds of projects that you would take on to accomplish this target have a lot of co-benefits, including saving money, improving public safety and others. And it also makes, would make us more competitive for outside funding from a lot of grants that are available right now. And we're gonna talk more about each of those. Things. In terms of timing, most of these targets choose the year twenty fifty as their end goal. But it's also common to establish some interim goals. As milestones to kind of help track progress toward the overall goal. And then many different entities and levels of governments. Adopt these targets. It can be a country, a state, local government. But it can also be a corporation, universities, a kind of a whole, a whole different range of. Types of organizations can adopt these goals. And how do you do it? Basically, you, you know, you decide to do it so you would adopt a resolution, some sort of formal. Document stating your intentions and then most likely follow that up with. A plan of how you're going to achieve the target. And then as far as where, as I said, many. Locations around the United States and the world have, have adopted these targets, but we wanted to look more specifically at areas. Around us in our region. So I don't know if you can kind of see this map, but you know, kind of showing Wyoming and surrounding states. And which cities and towns have adopted greenhouse gas. Reduction targets. So there's a couple in Wyoming, but there's really a lot in Montana, Idaho, Utah, Colorado, South Dakota. So. We just kind of bring this up to say, you know, if Lander decides to do this, we certainly wouldn't be alone. There's lots of other cities and towns in our region that have done this, that we can. Learn from, exchange knowledge and experience with. And then also, we would not be alone in this because the state of Wyoming is also tackling something similar. The Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality recently received a three million dollar grant from the EPA to do statewide greenhouse gas planning. Yeah, so as part of that, they will be working on a greenhouse gas inventory, emissions projections, reduction targets and reduction measures. So. And that's for the, so they'll be doing that in the planning stage. There's also a large pot of funds available. After that phase is complete in an implementation phase that Wyoming can then apply for. And we kind of bring this up just to, to say that. The state level effort that the DEQ is doing would not come into Lander and set targets for us or make plans for us. But if Lander chose to adopt a target and make our own plan, we would be fitting in really well with what's already happening at the state level. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Randy Kraft.
Thank you, Courtney. Courtney mentioned that there are other communities nearby that are also considering greenhouse gas emission. Reduction goals, and I just want to take a little moment here to highlight a couple of those that are nearby. The city of Laramie, they adopted a resolution back in twenty twenty. To basically try to achieve net zero carbon emissions by twenty fifty using their twenty twenty baseline as a starting point. They intend to quantify, analyze their mission and do an emissions inventory and come up with a reduction strategies they could implement to, to try to achieve those goals. It's a matter of public policy for them to do outreach, education and training and to also secure funding. Next slide, please. Now I should mention that Laramie, we would consider that net zero to be a more aggressive target. Now, in, in contrast to that, the city of Red Lodge, Montana, a town of about twenty-three hundred people. They've taken a more, what I'd say is a conservative approach. They've decided. Using their twenty, twenty sixteen as a baseline. Their goal is a fifty percent reduction by the year twenty forty. And they have established interim goals along the way, which is what a lot of these communities are doing so that they can kind of judge their progress as they go, decide whether or not they want to change their goals in the future. They established in Red Lodge an interim goal of ten percent reduction by twenty twenty-one. And then every five years, they would like to achieve another ten percent reduction also. Now they've all, they kind of, they've actually been doing quite well apparently because they achieved their ten percent reduction before twenty twenty-one. And because of that, they decided to go ahead and. Change their twenty fifth or their twenty forty goal, try to achieve this fifty percent reduction by twenty thirty. Next slide, please. Now, in terms of what our team is recommending to you, city council members. We're, we're actually suggesting more of a, what I would call maybe a moderate goal. We'd like to see. Or we'd like you to consider perhaps trying to achieve an eighty percent reduction by the year twenty fifty. And this slide shows you what our baseline was back in twenty twenty-one in terms of CO2 emissions. We. The municipality here emitted about three, three thousand two hundred tons of CO2. We'd like to see that drop to six hundred forty one, forty-one tons by the year twenty fifty. We do believe this is a reasonable goal. At last count. When I checked, I found thirteen community, communities that were under ten thousand in population. They have emissions reduction plans. Most of these plans, they're considering to drop emissions by fifty to ninety percent. And some of the communities are also considering net zero. So we do think that what, what we are proposing in terms of the eight percent reduction by the year twenty fifty is quite reasonable. And with that, I'd like to introduce Adam. He's going to talk a little bit about greenhouse gas baseline and some projects we could consider.
Thank you, Randy. I'm Adam. I'm here to talk about kind of what it will look like to actually achieve one of these targets. So on this slide, what you see is a pie chart, and this was in the twenty twenty-one. Baseline report. This was presented to you in report form a year ago and we presented it to you verbally like this at city council. Kind of a complicated pie chart, but each slice of the pie is representing a. A sector of the Lander Municipal Government. And its contributions to the greenhouse gas emissions totals for the city in twenty twenty-one. To summarize really quickly, roughly sixty percent of that is coming from building energy use, whether that's electricity or natural gas. And then the remaining forty percent roughly is things like vehicle fuel usage and then actually. Very large portion is from fugitive methane emissions, things like wastewater treatment ponds. They have methane that comes off of those. And then there's also methane from solid waste that gets sent to the landfill. It breaks down and it's emitted to the atmosphere. Next slide, please. So what does it look like to actually reduce those pieces of that pie? And this is a complicated chart. But I'll, I'll walk you through it. Each of these colors, each of these bars is one of those sectors, things like buildings, vehicles, solid waste and. on the left is that 2021 baseline and on the right is that 2050 goal. So in the very top left is where you see that 2021 baseline. And if we make no changes, everything would stay on that top line, right? So that itself is the baseline. And the reason that this chart goes down from there is we're saying that we are reducing from that 2021 baseline. So at that bottom right is that 80% target, and that's where we want to get to, or at least what we are recommending. The reason that you have a plan like this is that you can look at the areas that you want to try and target for reduction. So in, you know, I'll draw your attention to something like the bottom right, that purple kind of triangle between 2040 and 2050. What this is saying is we know that something like the wastewater treatment plant will need to be replaced at some point in the hopefully intermediate to distant future. We know that that's a large capital expenditure for the city. And we also know that it contributes to greenhouse gas emissions. So with that knowledge, we can say that's likely not going to happen until 2040 or after. If we know that, we can plan and adjust the other wedges, the other colors here to achieve the other targets beforehand, right? So we can shift where that is. You know, this plan is obviously very rough. It's mostly extrapolated lines, but it's kind of mostly there for an example of what a plan like this would look like. Another good example would be is if we know that there's a building that has, say, a furnace that is due for replacement sometime along the lines of, you know, I'm just choosing 2031. You can plan for that to happen after that 2030 period and adjust to try and hit that 20% intermediate target before then in other areas. Next slide, please. So what does it actually take to achieve any of those targets? Well, there's a number of projects that the city can undertake. This is not an exhaustive list by any means, but I'll, I'll kind of walk through a few of them. So in each of those sectors, we have, you know, buildings and facilities, vehicles and transportation, et cetera. So what does it take to get buildings and facilities to actually achieve some of these targets? Well, some of those projects look like improving the building energy efficiency that includes insulating, air ceiling drafts, windows and doors, the stuff you're all familiar with. But it also includes things like improving the heating and ventilating and air conditioning as well as something maybe like solar and batteries. Uh, under vehicles, you're looking at converting over time as vehicles retire to electric vehicles or hybrids. You're looking at improving pedestrian infrastructure and you're looking at even providing city staff with bicycles for certain tasks and errands that warranted. Under wastewater, you're really looking at methane capture and use as well as wetland water treatment. And I will be frank, I do not know what that is. I think Lance mentioned it to us at some point, but under solid waste, you're looking at anything that diverts the city's municipal government from sending waste to the landfill. So increasing recycling, increasing donation of used goods and introducing potentially uh composting of organic waste. And then there's carbon sequestration, so planting trees onto city land. And again, that wetland water treatment program, which I won't get into. So next slide, please. But here's the, I guess, the highlight is that all of those projects don't just reduce greenhouse gases. All of them, every single one of them has a co-benefit, some of them multiple. And most of these are on the city's strategic plan as, as best benefits. So many of these projects, I might even caution at saying the majority of them will save money, right? So something like better heating, ventilating and air conditioning, solar and battery, building energy efficiency, methane capture and use, and improving the fleet vehicles. Those might have a small to intermediate increase in a capital cost upfront, but they are well proven to save money over time. This is better for the city's pocketbook. Many of these projects have other environmental benefits, something like tree planting or dark sky compliant LED streetlights. Those are good for our local flora and fauna. Some of these projects are good for the quality of life of our citizens. Things like pedestrian infrastructure and trees, that makes life better here and it's better for people to live. In the bottom left, that icon, the bricks, some of these projects provide more resilient infrastructure. If we have solar and battery, when there's powder, power outages, some of our services can stay up and running. That bottom central icon, that's kind of saying that some of these improve the quality of life of city staff. More efficient buildings tend to also be healthier and more comfortable to be, to be in, excuse me. And then that bottom right icon might be the most important of all is that some of these projects improve public safety. LED streetlights and pedestrian infrastructure prevent people from getting killed. So this, these projects wouldn't be taken in a vacuum as Randy highlighted and as, as Courtney highlighted, we wouldn't be alone. Laramie has set a goal. And since then, they've done investment grade energy audits on their buildings and have performed many upgrades. They've installed four large solar arrays. They've bought four hybrid police vehicles and have eight more on order. And they even have one um all-electric bulldozer owned by the city. That was news to me. Those are very interesting little tidbits. Red Lodge, very similar. They've done large-scale building energy efficiency studies and projects. They've installed variable frequency drives at their water treatment and wastewater treatment facilities to try and save on electricity there. They've done outdoor LED lighting and they've also installed a solar array. So thank you for your time. I'm going to hand the mic over to Kara.
All right. Thank you. All right, I'm going to do a quick overview of a return on investment example, and this is one from which the city of Lander has already done this project. So in 2022, our team helped direct city staff towards having the water treatment plant go through the Wyoming Energy Authority's Energy Audit Program. So they got a free uh basic energy audit of that facility. And then along with that, they also got $23,000 to implement some of the findings from that energy audit. So some of the improvements that they did were replacing 20-year-old old inefficient air compressors. I think there are two of them. And they installed programmable thermostats and they did some minor insulation and weather stripping. So that grant helped cut implementation costs for those projects in half. As far as cost savings, um, these projects were implemented in early summer of this year, so we don't have that many months to go off of. But you can see every month has had electricity savings. In July, there is 38% electricity reduction. August, 19%, September, 13, 30%, and each one of those, you know, 100 to $400 in savings. This graph is showing 2021 electricity use and you can see it's generally pretty constant. So assuming that that's going to be this year, we'll have a couple thousand dollars in savings just from electricity on those measures. Natural gas is a little bit more variable and seasonal, so we don't have any data on that yet, but just with this example, we can say that, you know, maybe the city was going to replace those old inefficient air compressors once they died, but we were able to get to it beforehand and start saving the city money now and not five years when they died. So great return on investment for energy efficiency projects. Um, and as you could see from the Laramie and Red Lodge examples, that's usually low-hanging fruit for communities. Now, one of the key elements of why to adopt greenhouse gas targets is for grant competitiveness. Um, as many of you are aware, there are a lot of federal grants out there right now, and our team helped the city apply for three or submit three different applications under two different Department of Energy grants. First one is the Energy Improvements in Rural or Remote Areas. And for that grant, we submitted a concept paper for over $1 million, no cost share requirement. And this project was put 120 kilowatts of solar with battery backup on the community center. Couple advantages to that project. One is cost savings because with solar and battery backup, you're able to cost shave some of those peak demand charges of which make up 70% of the community center's electricity bill. So cost savings and then also energy resilience. So if you have solar and battery backup, if the grid goes down, which it has multiple times this year, you'll have an energy source that can be used by itself or with a generator. So dual backup. And that, if that facility ever becomes an emergency shelter again, it's going to be really apparent that we have good energy backup. So ultra-competitive. For the concept paper phase, which isn't even the application, there are 659 app, uh, concept papers submitted. Out of that 59 were invited to submit a full application. The city of Lander was not one of those, but that just shows how competitive it is for these federal grants. The second grant was the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. We submitted two applications under that one. The first one was for $100,000 to join seven other mount, mountain west towns to develop energy and conservation plans for each town. The second one was for $500,000 and that was to transition all of the street lighting in Lander, both decorative and neighborhood Rocky Mountain Power owned lights to LED. And for both of those applications, we were uh in the final round of the applications just weren't selected as one of the 12 selected, 12 communities. I'll also highlight here that those 12 had 68 partner organizations involved and 80 communities. So they're really looking for partnerships here with other communities. And Lander needs to be able to reach out to other communities in the region or within the state, even the county, to put some of these projects forward. All right, this little box here at the bottom is a screenshot I took from the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. It says here in the background, they want to see goals related to clean energy, energy efficiency, fossil fuel and greenhouse gas emissions reduction and/or sustainability. Right there. Then they want you to briefly explain the community's progress made to date and challenges and obstacles that remain. So they want to see how your proposed project fits into the broader narrative of your community's goals and ambitions. And along with that, they want you to quantify your emissions reduction with that project and your energy use profile. If you're reducing energy or where that energy is coming from. Luckily, we had the 2021 Municipal Energy and Environment Report to go off of, which this uh group presented last year. Because this had uh emissions baselines and energy use baselines that we could use to apply for these grants. If we didn't have this data, we probably wouldn't have even been able to apply for these grants in the first place because there's a two-month window in which you're notified about the grant opportunity to when you have to submit. So you have to have the data available and be ready on your game. So hovering this just really briefly again, greenhouse gas targets help you be competitive. As Courtney showed with that map, there are a lot of other communities out there that already have goals set. So we need to be competitive, but we also need to partner with them, right? So competitiveness, but also partnering and forming a narrative of what the city is doing and why. So over time, targets and the supporting plan that would come with would help guide city staff on what's, what projects to do, just like a transportation or a master plan would. And it also helps volunteers like our group or other community groups tap in to know when when certain projects are coming up and how we can help. And ultimately, the targets can be revised. You know, if like the city of Red Lodge, you all are doing great job at crushing those targets, you can make them more difficult or conversely, in 2040 or 2045, if you're 70% instead of nearing 80, you all can come back or the next council can come back and uh hash that out if you want to uh relax those or or go ahead. It's really just a conversation piece, right? Each milestone, you come back and say, how are we doing? And, and how could we be better? So that is my spiel and I'll give it over to Louisa for ending remarks.
All right, I'm back and it says summary. That way you know that we're getting close to the end. Okay, so summary. We are uh suggesting that the city uh consider adopting a greenhouse gas target of an 80% reduction by 2050. And just to be super clear, an assumption behind this presentation that we haven't said explicitly yet, but we are talking just about municipal operations here. When we say a goal for the city, we're not talking about citizens. We are not talking about businesses and we're not talking about the school district or any other public entities, just strictly city government. Here are, there are many uh benefits to adopting a target and most of which further other existing city goals. So the little smiley face is quality of life, the dollar sign saves um money. Uh, one thing I'll add to what was said uh already in the, the cost-saving part is I know you all are aware, but Rocky Mountain Power announced a very substantial um rate increase. And that's going to affect, well, all of us personally, but also the city government. And so being more efficient in our energy use and using less electricity that comes from Rocky Mountain Power can, can really help insulate the city from that volatility uh that's happening. The little vest is public safety. Uh, there are staff benefits, there are benefits to environmental quality and uh the projects associated with this uh can help create more resilient city infrastructure. Okay, another point, uh, this reduction can help attract outside funding. That includes uh a lot of federal grants. We'd be joining other communities in this effort. This is, we're not, we're not on the leading edge of this. We're following what lots of other people are doing. This is not revolutionary and the state of Wyoming is on board and there's a lot of other communities that are, um, have similar targets that we could partner for on some of those outside funding opportunities. Having this plan would create a long-term vision. Uh, reducing the city's greenhouse gas emissions by 80% is not something that happens overnight. Um, and it's not something that happens potentially even in the time that any of you are on the city council, right? It takes longer than that. And so having a long-term vision that can last through changes in leadership is really helpful. And um, this is something that volunteers are uh excited to help with. That's what all of us are here for. Um, I imagine that's why there's some audience members here tonight. Cause people in the community are, are, are willing to pitch in on this. Thank you. Uh, that is the presentation. Uh, we are now happy to answer questions and I would also like to note that we have brought a signup sheet. We are um quite excited and willing to meet with city council members individually. Cause there's a lot of detail here and we're happy to go um answer your individual questions. One-on-one at another time if that's useful. So that's why we've brought the signup sheet.
Council questions? Of course, Councilman White.
Like you knew it was coming there. Thank you to all of you for this presentation. Uh, a lot of it caught my eye, including uh the map you provided of all the communities. I had no idea that there were that many communities likewise pursuing this. So I know you don't have a, a crystal ball, but I'm going to ask you to, to try to read your crystal ball, tea leaves, whatever you want to uh use for that. So to what extent would having established greenhouse gas goals aid the city in being able to qualify for some of the funding that the state DEQ and EPA are bringing in? I'm, I mean, I'm hoping it would be advantageous to us. Wha- what's your read on that?
There we go. Um, yeah, so you brought up the EPA grant that DEQ is uh pursuing. And that does allow for sub-awards. So city, city of Lander could petition DEQ for a sub-award, especially, you know, saying that we are also creating targets, DEQ, we want to be in on this with you. And that implementation pot is $4 billion versus the, the planning grant, 2 million. So that's a big difference. And if we were able to team up with the state DEQ or other communities on that grant, that's just one example of how they are looking for targets. And after you have your targets and your projections, there's a whole lot of funding open to you.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, and then also wanted to note, I, I appreciate you uh noting the Rocky Mountain Power increase and also what you noted on page 11 of, of this, of our, our city's annual electrical costs and you know, it's And you know, it's, it's uh, you know, every time we go through bills and claims, we're seeing between fourteen to sixteen thousand dollars to Rocky Mountain Power. And when you add it up annually to see a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, that is a big number. And I, I can't imagine anyone would not want to see that number go down through better efficiencies and alternate energy methods. Um, that to me seems like a, a, a much better use of taxpayer dollars to be paying, paying this other entity less through greater efficiencies. Now, thank you for, for bringing that to our attention.
Council, any other questions? Councilman Hall?
Um, yes, so the, the people here that we were competing against. Can I assume they had a, a better plan and a better goal, and they had things that were set up in front of them? Just like we were talking about the economic development money. So, so uh, setting a bar high and having goals uh, can give you an advantage to grants and any other support?
Yeah, and, and uh, you know, myself and Annie even, and our uh, grant writer, Michelle Escudero, that helped with that LED streetlight project, we actually did a debrief session with the DEQ staff members. And they said that we need to, to build up our narrative more, like who is Lander? What are, what are you striving for in this town? Why is it important that LED lighting is here? So that narrative component is maybe one of the key drivers for, for success. I, I mean, I wasn't the one reviewing, um, but it, it, that was direct feedback that we got from DEQ or not DEQ, Department of Energy.
And I had one other question. Methane capture. That sounds pretty entailed.
Adam.
I'd love, I'd, I'd love to hear a little something about that, please.
Yeah, so that might be easier for me to explain one-on-one with you sometime. But there's, there's pretty well-established technology for gathering the gases that come off of wastewater and then gathering them for burning, right? Like, that's a useful fuel. Um, there's even more advanced technology than that, but you know, obviously that's a higher capital cost upfront. But that extra added energy and that energy savings can very well pay for itself and the economics, you know, I'd have to look that up.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
I was looking into seeing how we're a no emission state. Um, I'm not against anything you all are talking about by any means, but I was looking into uh, it would be the Wyoming statutes and its title thirty-five, Public Health and Safety, Chapter eleven, Environmental Quality, Section thirty-five, eleven, two thirteen. I, I don't quite understand what this is saying, but it seems to me it says, neither the department nor the council shall propose or promu, promulgate any new rule or regulation intended in whole or in part to reduce emissions as called for by the cryauto protocol from residential, commercial, industrial, electric, utility, transportation, agricultural, energy, or mining sectors. So I believe we're counsel. And we're not to propose or promulgate, which would be like talk about or engage about.
I, I don't have an answer for that, but I can tell you there are other communities in Wyoming that have set these targets. And um, the state of Wyoming is like, has accepted federal money in order to have an, uh, any missions reduction plan. And so we just have to look into how that interacts with that law. I'm not totally sure, but we can look into it.
Yeah, I was just looking to kind of cover your tail thing.
Good call.
What else? Councilman Martin?
Yeah, just one, one quick question, you know, uh, uh, looking at these city staff bicycles. So, so, so does the, so does the old fat councilman?
I'd get flack for that.
So the old fat councilman get, get to have a, an e-bike?
Okay, you know, that one was, I was just trying to think of ways that city staff get around without, you know, getting into, into a car. But that, those recommendations, I mean, that's to be said that some of them were just from our minds, right? Or other things that we've looked in other plans from other communities. Some of them, we've had historical conversations, but the, that was just sampling. I would love an e-bike too. How about we, how about council gets one? Okay, we'll go on a joy ride.
Great, that'd be great.
Yep. Yes, thank you guys very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm gonna pass out the uh, signup if you would like to sign up for a time with us.
Just move on. We got uh, discussion concerning potential munico title three changes, Lance.
Hunter. Thank you, council. Um, yeah, this is just a refresh of the discussion we had a little over a year ago.
Hey Hunter, let's let everybody clear their.
You guys don't have to leave. Hunter's not that boring.
Mayor, I can't believe folks don't want to stay for IBC revisions. Shocking.
Hey, ready? Hunter, go ahead.
Sure. Uh, so I presented to most of you back almost a little over a year ago, I believe, on the same identical form. Um, just mostly just cleaning up Title III, a lot of munico we're going through and just tightening it up. Um, so I think, as you know, Title IV is coming through with zoning, um, with planning commission. Uh, Title III is just proper adoption of our international building codes. So this is kind of layman's terms of what's coming your way. Uh, what will come down the pike is way more legalese than this, but I wanted to make this kind of a quick, easy roadmap to understanding what, what we're officially re-adopting. Uh, my intent with this is not to change anything we currently are practicing or using. This is just formally and properly adopting the codes. So it shouldn't change anything from status quo, just gives us more teeth for what we're really doing out there.
Question.
Counselor White mentioned today that uh, some of these docs are not shareable or not shared as with the actual adoption legalese with those. So I can get those in PDF form or something easier for you guys to read if you like.
Sorry, there we go. I guess what I was looking at there, uh, Hunter, so the, the part that you got highlighted in red, uh, is that the, the part that is going to be, or is currently changed?
So I, what I did is a strike through of what it currently is reading. Red is what will be the changes that will be too. And the green in those is more just clarification on those. So those wouldn't necessarily be in the munico. But those are understanding what those appendices of those codes are to help explain this in a conversation like this. So for instance, in the twenty twenty-one International Building Code, Appendix A is Employee Qualification. So we would adopt that appendix in addition to the codebook.
Okay, and so uh, the AB, and then we miss CDF. Uh, are those something that's uh, we're, we're not adopting or just something that's not changed?
Correct. Yeah, those are things like straw bale houses, or I can get you those if you want to see exactly what, but it's um, things that aren't necessarily what we're practicing now and using now, like tiny houses. There's a lot of different appendices within all of those codebooks that cover everything under the sun as far as building goes. And I was trying to catch most of the stuff what we've currently using in Lander is to get a status quo and a starting ground for moving forward.
Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to understand the, the document here.
Totally, yeah. I tried to make it as simple as I could. And I say, it'll, it'll read a lot cleaner, and we can even show it a draft version of what that munico looks like. This is kind of an extrapolated version to show um, what uh, is in each one of these codes that we're currently using. At the very bottom of that, you'll see a lot of strike throughs. Um, that's redundant things that are already within the codes. And it's actually sometimes conflicting with our own codes. So it's trying to clean up a lot of conflict we have too.
Mayor, um, if you don't mind if I chime in a little bit, but if we go into Title III now, uh, if you read it at some point, it's just, it'll go through and we made a change to like the twenty-twelve building code. And then it's still in our, our existing code saying that we changed something in twenty-twelve, yet we adopted twenty-fifteen, we adopted twenty-eighteen. And we replaced all this stuff before it, and it never got deleted. And so we just have um, a whole bunch of Title III that is showing our history of what has been done, but not necessarily showing where we are to date. So this cleanup process is to go through and pretty much wipe out the majority of that section. Uh, we're still, we'll still keep uh, the floodplain information that's within that code somewhere within that. And then we'll adopt the codes and standards that we have to date, but we're really trying to get rid of all of the stuff that is no longer applicable or doesn't exist to date or is creating confusion out there. Because in twenty-twelve, you didn't have to get roofing permits because a hailstorm came through. We couldn't handle it as staffing at that point, so they said, we'll just say you're exempt from that for right now. And the intent wasn't to do that forever or move it forward, and we didn't carry those um, exceptions forward. So this is where you will see those exceptions in these sections. So if we go back through our uh, next fun round of fire sprinklers and we decide to amend it or to leave it, whatever we decide to do there, um, we'll spell it out and we'll address that maybe one at a time rather than having it adopt all as one thing in the future as well. We're still talking about that internally, how to make this clean. But we almost killed the IBC and all the rest of the code stuff uh, that we were doing because we were talking so much about one topic. So we'll kind of help guide through this as we clean this up so that it's not confusing. This isn't supposed to open back up fire sprinklers today.
I wasn't even going to talk about that.
Yeah. But it's supposed to get us to where we are to date, so that you guys can help guide us and we can help make recommendations to move forward on what we're doing. We didn't adopt these uh, appropriately in the past. I think that's just kind of a lack of understanding. And so, you know, Hunter and I kind of disagree as far as what we've adopted. I said, well, we adopted these books in their entirety. And Hunter's like, no, we didn't adopt any of the appendices. So you can see just in between the two of us that we don't have clarification. So it bring, it brings a, a black and white approach to this as far as where we are and what rules contractors and others need to follow.
Councilman.
Yeah, the, I, I wanted to make a comment on the, on the sprinkler. I can't remember. I can't remember what town, what town was that? Rock Springs, Rock Springs uh, put sprinklers in, and I guess a lot of the, a lot of the businesses folded. I guess a lot of the business said, no, we're, and uh, so it sounds to me like there, there's an article somewhere on it, but uh, it sounded pretty disastrous. Thank you, man.
Thank you.
You guys, that back in that time, this was all manually done. It was somebody's job to make all these changes. So munico makes it very easy now when we make a change that it hits all the spots. So this is like housekeeping because we had a manual person making manual changes and mistakes happen.
Right, and that's one of the compelling reasons why we invested in munico. So we could get these things cleared up for our use, for general public, and make things just a, a cleaner, all-around effort. So Hunter, I can't imagine how many hours of screen time happened. Uh, you know, can the city buy you a pair of readers or something and, and response for, I, I mean, seriously, tha- thank you. Like, this is very much needed, and I, I can only imagine how tedious it was.
Sure, and um, don't be delusional that this is coming in Title IV and Title IX and Title XIII. There's a lot of others that need to be cleaned up as well. We don't want to inundate council with hitting thirteen titles all at once with what this looks like. So we hope to kind of uh, start the snowball rolling with this process.
And it's just snowball.
Yeah, it is. Uh, I guess with that, you know, we know that our Board of Appeal section that exists is conflicting with what the front of these codebooks say. And you know, that's Title XIII that we're starting to get into, or Title XI, and we need to move things. So this is the start, um, and we're going to try to do it hopefully chapter by chapter. And we'll bring more and, and try to break it down in a way um, that you can understand it. This was the, the guideline or the outline of what we're doing. And then you'll see the document come across, and you can refer back to this and saying, okay, I see what's going on. Or just ask questions and we can revisit it.
Okay. All right, moving on. Non-metered water use discussion.
You want that one?
Under Lance, it's both you guys.
Sure. Uh, I believe this is discussed in a fee we may be proposing for um, non-metered water use. It was mostly guided around illegal usage of fire hydrants in town for filling for contractors' trucks or um, different entities that were using that. Um, in the past, we have issued city-owned meters for those, but uh, without doing those city-owned meters, uh, we have possible contamination for backflow, uh, contamination to our city water lines. So um, we're proposing adding a fee to uh, non, non-metered water usage. We looked initially just strictly doing hydrants, but then we looked more broadly at what this really is, is um, people that could tap into the mains from somewhere else too and potentially damage our system.
Not to mention that the SRF, so they sent back items for um, changes and whatnot. And that was one of their thing was being able to validate what we, what we produce versus what we sell and know our discrepancies. And that's one without a water meter, when somebody hooks up to it and they use water, we have no idea how many gallons. I mean, I, I'm pretty OCD about it, and these guys tease me about it, but I'm pretty OCD about keeping track of the water production versus what we're selling, and that's so that our ratio is within a, a close enough percentage that, and that, that's a big thing to them because that was one of the things they asked me about was that being able to prove our, prove our numbers.
Questions? Does anyone have more to add?
No, I think that's, this is just a deterrent, yeah, you know, to get you compliant, to come in, check out a meter or to use the bulk fill station. So as long as we have something behind this, uh, we're hoping that we encourage people to follow our rules. There was just nothing in the back there that was uh, so what if I decide to just hook up to a hydrant and, you know, where are you going with this? Uh, so we want to discourage that use, and we've had it happen uh, several times. So yep, we've had, we've had people reported, we've had uh, people who are just hooked up and, and taking and filling, and uh, we just don't want to see that at all. Uh, as far as where we're going or have to deal with cross-contamination or usage.
Excuse me, that's a little different than the, the one he chose that we saw up there off of the one hydrant on uh, Cliff Street that uh, was supplying a, a house, I think, because the.
Yep, that was us. Um, and so that was us getting somebody back into service until we could fix that, that water. Yep, that was us. And so that was us getting somebody back into service until we could fix that that water line. We did find some un-metered houses along our adventure in some of these properties and we've got them back into using the meters. I mean, we're trying to get everybody just to be compliant, move forward. But we don't want anybody pushing the limits or testing the system, just follow the rules.
Anybody have anything else they want to add? Maybe it's your I went before I knew it. I knew I'd need one bus.
Have a good night.
You too, Josh.
Yes.